You're all set. Have a good meeting.
Thank you. All right, the Citrus School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. All right, I will call the March 11th Citrus School Committee Meeting to order 6:02. And we will start here with public comment. Yes, it's Whitrow.
Hi, Laurie Whitrow, 62.
Yeah, you can come on.
Just for the folks in the audience.
I'm here. Hi, Laurie Whitrow, 62, Anne Vinal Road. I have a few things that I wanted to comment on tonight, please. The first thing I wanted to comment was I wanted to give a shout out to the Gates Drama Club. They had a phenomenal performance this weekend. I actually don't have anyone that was in it, but my husband and I always try to support different groups, whether it's sports or drama. And we go every year and it's every time we leave and we say, we can't believe this was a middle school performance.
Yeah.
So if you did not go or you have not been to any performances in the past, you go. It's worth every dollar to support the kids. They put in so much effort and it really is a wonderful performance. So just a little shout out. I know usually I have high school shout outs from the school, but something from the middle school is that that was just really, really great. And my second one is about the Heatherly Cushing School Project. I have attended many, many meetings from the start of this. And quite frankly, not many people from the public are in attendance. I don't know how many people are watching, but this is just a shout out to all of the registered voters and residents of Citrus. This project, there's already been a lot of money and effort put into this project. And I'm asking you to please get involved, please show up. The, I am someone that asks a lot of questions. I always have. I've been a parent in this district for a very long time. And I've asked questions and they're answered. And I just asked a question last week. I got a very, very thorough answer back. The committee listens. This is a, this is a very expensive project, but it's needed. It's needed in this town. And I'm asking to please not just show up on April 29th and not have the information and to not look at the needs of our town for these two buildings. So if you cannot attend a meeting, please watch the recordings. Please reach out to the people on the committee. They are very responsive to answering. So I'm just asking, and those of you who are supportive, please get involved. There is not very many weeks left until that meeting. But this is already a lot of money and effort that's been put into this project. So if you are supportive, please help, please get involved, and please do what needs to be done for the town of Citrus to show that we are putting education first. Thank you on that. And my third thing is on the school calendar, which I know is on for our vote tonight. I spoke last month, I believe, about it and my feelings haven't changed. I'm a proponent of looking at going before Labor Day. I, I, every single thing that I've, I've looked at, I really can't find many cons. And along with the school project, which is for putting education first, I believe that starting a few days earlier also puts education first. It shows that we're prioritizing education before beach days. And honestly, the only pros that I've heard is we're a beach town. And that we have, you know, oh, we can go away and there aren't many people at the resorts and we can spend less money. That shows that we are putting beach days before education. And we all know that all of the days that are before spring testing, all of the days in September, you are going to get more out of a fresh student and a fresh teacher than you are in June. And we are, we are competing for ranks as much as, you know, there's controversy there. I, I agree with that, but it's the truth is that, you know, if another town in the South Shore has a few days, now you may say it's only two or three days. This year it would put us out in June before Juneteenth. And I believe the last survey that happened on whether people wanted to go before or after Labor Day, we did not have Juneteenth as a holiday when that was like a 50/50 vote.
That's true.
I know from, you know, 20 years ago of having, being a mother of young children, there weren't as many parents working. Now you have those parents working much, you know, and they are, they're really looking for that childcare in the end of August when there is no, there are no more camps that last week because the other towns are back in school and the college kids are back, back to college. So I'm not sure if it's already been decided, maybe it has before the vote tonight. But I just hope when you do the discussion, can you just talk about the pros and the cons perhaps tonight? And just say, let's look at the pros, let's look at the cons, knowing that with the Juneteenth holiday and the hours and days on learning. And it's, and then the other date on there was that Friday, December 20th, which is a half a day, which I don't really understand the half days and how that counts. But that's five days before the holiday, which is a little different than being December 23rd or December 22nd. So I would, if you could just clarify why we need a half day on the 20th. So that's all. Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much, Whitrow. Appreciate your comments. I will look to virtually, we do not have any hands raised. All right. And we'll look forward to our student reports.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
We're all doing well. David unfortunately wasn't able to make it again, so I'll be sharing the updates today. First, here are some winter sports updates. As we've mentioned, the SHS cheer team will be heading to Disney to compete in the cheerleading national competition from March 14th to March 18th. We wish good luck to all of our cheerleaders. Boys hockey and boys basketball were Patriot League champions. And in boys hockey, James Sullivan broke Citrus High School hockey's scoring record on February 28th with an overtime goal versus Melrose in round one of the state tournament, which is an amazing achievement. The Massachusetts Secondary Schools Athletic Directors Association has chosen Citrus High School's athletic director, Scott Payne, for the District Nine Award of Merit. This award is a reflection of his dedication and commitment to interscholastic athletics in the state of Massachusetts. Next, here are some academic updates. As I mentioned in the last meeting, Citrus Public Schools is collaborating with Fly-in Classroom to provide virtual classes on Saturdays for grades seven through 12. The first two sessions were on March 2nd and 9th, and the last session is this Saturday, March 16th, teaching about a cow eye dissection. The State's Seal of Literacy is an award provided by the state, by state-approved districts that recognizes high school graduates who attain high functional and academic levels of proficiency in English and a world language. It recognizes students for having studied and obtained proficiency in two or more languages by high school graduation. The State's Seal of Literacy takes the form of a seal that appears on the transcript or diploma of the graduating senior and is a statement of accomplishment for future employers and for college admissions. The following students have earned the State's Seal of Literacy. Max Allen, Matthew Carolyn, Ashley Doherty, Ben Akis, Amelia Cadizon, Luisa Kinsley, Natalia Lipschitz, Beth McKeon, Caitlin Mankiewicz, David Murphy, Claire Murray, Nick Mutter, Adeline Oliver, Jennifer Robley, Matthew Short, Ava Von Fremen, and Malice Wasserman. Also, as we've mentioned, David Murphy was the Massachusetts winner in the Voice of Democracy's competition and he was one of 52 finalists in a pool of 30,000. The national contest was March 2nd, 3rd, and 4th in Washington DC. And David enjoyed a wonderful experience and was able to tour the White House, which is really cool. The robotics team competed at Bridgewater State this past weekend on Saturday and Sunday, March 9th and 10th. I suggest students have their art displayed at the French Street Art Gallery from February 29th to March 24th. And the public is welcome to view the great work that our students have placed in the gallery. Shore provided lunch for the Citrus High School staff on Thursday, March 7th in Panera, and they thank Shore for all that they do. Molly went headed to Nationals in California at UC Berkeley from March 6th to March 11th, which I heard was an awesome trip. And David was there, so we'll have to hear more about it with him when he gets back. IXL is taking their biannual trip to Disney from March 11th to March 15th. And Citrus High School recognizes Gia Adams, James Ford, David Murphy, Jake Perry, Bridget Coleman, Claire Puppleseppi, Allison McGordy, Serenity Pope, Hannah Smith, and Julie Meredith as Sailors of the Month this month. Class Cup events are marked for post by administration. Juniors are still in first place, unfortunately for us. And the next class cup event is the SHS ping pong tournament, which is run by Student Council, starting tomorrow. And lastly, for some guidance news, the course selection process is now underway for rising ninth to 11th grade students, or sorry, ninth to 12th grade students. High school students were introduced to the course selection process through Lind Block with their home-based teachers on March 4th. And students will meet individually with their school counselor in the next two weeks to discuss their course selections. Earlier this month, school counselors visited Gates to share information with eighth grade students and the department held an informational session for Gates caregivers on March 7th. All resources for the course selection process are available on the SHS School Council webpage and the course selection portal will close on March 15th. Students and caregivers are encouraged to reach out to their school counselor if they need assistance with the process. And lastly, on March 8th, a group of SHS students interested in the medical field attended a healthcare career expo in Duxbury. Representatives from many different job roles presented information to students about their daily activities. And Zoe Ryan and Elizabeth Plancy, school counselors, accompanied the students to the event. And that's all I had today. Thank you.
Daisy can. All right. Celebrate student learning with our Health, Wealth, and Business Department. Mr. Neri.
Yes. Delighted to see the agenda wasn't packed with other heavy events.
Wanted to highlight you.
You know, I can be a bit verbose with my sharing, so thank you for allocating an hour for this conversation. Look, but there are some amazing things to share, so one second to share a screen. I've got some callings and students this evening that I want to spotlight. This is the moment of sharing gratitude, some amazing things that are happening that we are quite frankly delighted to share with you and the community. So some of the things we're going to capitalize tonight or share tonight is what I feel are excellent practices, engaging experiences for students, enrichment opportunities, and career connections. I always talk with my colleagues, Mr. Mackey and Mr. Fageland, about beyond the classroom. How do we, what we do, how does it connect it beyond the walls of the classroom? How do we partner with the community? How do we work together with stakeholders? Get students experiences that get them excited, quite frankly, that they're excited about. Mr. Mackey, fresh off the state DECA competition, I'm going to turn the floor to you so you can share, share some information on that. I want to note too, for folks that, I believe this was shared with your X drive. Anytime you see like blue, this is almost used as a resource to shoot you to other places. Check out the success in the app. Here's a video, right? So it's meant to be a bit of a journey for the viewer. Does that make sense?
Good evening. I'm Spook Me and Marzen, Superintendent Burkhead. So yes, as Mr. Neri alluded to, we just recently came back this past Saturday. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yeah.
Obviously. All right. Yeah, we just came back this past Saturday from our DECA state marketing competition. And really what it is, and I know I presented to you guys in the past prior to getting approved for districts. But real quick with what DECA is, DECA is a business and marketing club for students. And it really provides students with the opportunity to take what they're learning in the classroom and provide engaging and enriching opportunities for them in various types of business fields and within an academic competition. So there's over 40 different business, industry type of career fields, such as finance, marketing, management, hospitality, and there's a lot more that I could go down with. In addition to that, there's also the opportunity for students to engage in entrepreneurship and community-based initiatives that are project-based within our classroom. So those would be projects that they're working on from the start of the school year, September, up through the qualifying process, which is in this January, February for this conference here, the state conference. So for this year, we had nine, currently we have over 90 total members of our DECA club. Within that, 79 attended the district competition back in December, and that was at the Sea Crest and Balmouth. Of those 79, we had 31 that qualified and competed most recently this past weekend at the state level competition. And then I have some exciting news to share with you guys. So, and I just told Mr. Burkhead in the hallway, we had three state champions from that event. Bailey Young, Savannah Garabedian, and Will Heine. Savannah and Bailey being juniors and Will Heine being our first ever freshman that's ever qualified to this point, which is an awesome experience for him. And we also had three finalists as well, which were Parker Shaw, Parker Hausman, and, oh my God, I'm on mic right now. Cooper, that's right, Cooper McDonald, sorry. And Parker Hausman's right behind me, so you're going to get to meet him as well. Parker was also a state champion last year for us and he attended the international competition in Orlando, which is exciting. And you'll also meet Taylor, who also was at the state competition this past weekend. Charlie and Jake were also district competitors last year and state competitors last year as well. So we have a really good representation of DECA members here in the room. So it's an awesome opportunity. And again, our numbers continue to grow, our success continues to grow each and every year. And again, much attributed to, you know, the growth of our business department and obviously the support of our school committee and Superintendent Burkhead for us to be able to have these opportunities for students. The other, the other awesome opportunity that provides enriching and engaging experiences for students is our Gillette Pay Your Place project patient initiative. And really, we've been partners with them since 2010, where this project has really evolved over the last 14 years or so to where it is today. And really where it is today is the marketing team, the craft marketing team, what they'll do each year is they'll send out the, some of the initiatives they're working on from a, a marketing standpoint on their end. And each year they send us five different initiatives that they love to see the classroom kind of take on and explore. So we take it on, we explore it, we allow students to have voice and choice with each one of the different initiatives that they offer. Students then choose which one they want to work on. And then all the different things that we talk about and discuss and learn in the classroom as far as classroom content curriculum-wise, we integrate it into this project. And they have to create a promotional plan to be able to present to the marketing rep at Gillette Stadium. So it's typically a four to five week PBL project that they'll work on. We vet it out, mint it out in the classroom with various different levels of presentations to finally get to that final presentation. We bring it up to Gillette. Usually it's one or two of the marketing team members that will, that the students will present to. And they provide honest, real industry-level type of feedback, opposite of obviously, you know, what I would give in a classroom or Mr. Fageland for that matter. But it's, it's, it's genuine, authentic feedback, you know? And I think that's something where the students get excited about. They love to hear it, you know, from somebody that's working in the industry, somebody from Gillette and the craft organization to really kind of hear how their approach was, you know, to the initiative. And, you know, so it's a really fun experience for the students and, but it's also, it's, it's a step, it's a step into diving into, hey, is this marketing field, business field, something I want to kind of carry on beyond this building or into either the career workforce or into, you know, the next four years in the college? And I think these are opportunities that we're providing for students that are really enriching, engaging, and kind of opens the path up and helps them figure it out as they move forward through this program. So, thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name's Eric Fageland. I know I've met, I know some of you. I haven't met all of you. So it's nice to be in front of you tonight. Most of the people in the building know me as Mr. F, so if you hear Mr. F in the conversations, they're most likely referring to me. My second year in the building and I've been very happy to be here and the experience has been tremendous. But for, as far as my role here as a business educator, it's really about the experience. It's really, it's making the classroom as experiential as possible. It's creating those opportunities for our students to understand what life is like outside of the building and whatever they might choose, rather than telling them what it's like, it's bringing those experiences into the classroom and giving them real-world opportunities to connect with different stakeholders, whether it be in the community, in the building, in the classroom, to deliver end product that is real, it's tangible and they can see. I have to give a huge shout out to Shore because if you had a chance to be in my classroom, it's extremely experiential. I mean, there's TVs everywhere, there's a podcasting studio there. And I would encourage any of the school committee to come in and check it out. If you have a project that needs to be done or you'd like to put out a message to the community, we're happy to facilitate that here in the, in my classroom. Big thanks to Shore for all their investment in the student activities here in the high school. Next, brought people into my classroom in the way of utilizing some of that podcasting technology. One person I brought in was Keaton Remby, who was a colleague of mine from way back in the day. She's a recruiter. She, we put together a 15-minute video podcast that really spoke to students about, as seniors and juniors, what they should think about as they study and choose their studies, what the job market's like, areas they may want to focus on that are hot markets for students in the business world right now. And there's actually a link that you can watch it if you have 15 minutes and you want to see what kind of message was delivered to the students. We also brought a gentleman named Jesse Cole back to the building. If you don't know Jesse, he's a graduate of Citrus High School in 2002, not 2012. And he's the owner of the Savannah Bananas. He is remarkable in terms of a sports marketer who's brought passion and brought energy and brought, you know, experiences to himself, his team, his team and the fans that he entertains. They just sold out at the Houston Astros stadium over the weekend and it's the first time they've had that many people in front of them. They play a brand of banana ball and the goal here is to try to build a project around the sort of the concept of the Savannah Bananas. Oh, I have a video podcast of him for 15 minutes that we're going to show students and then deliver that as sort of a, hey, I walked these halls, I did this, this is my building and this is what you can do with your life beyond Citrus if you have the passion and the, and the, and the energy for it. And then, you know, bringing those experiences to the classrooms and giving the kids the content is important, but it's also extremely important to let the kids sort of look at that synthesis level, that high level of, the, the, the learning experience, where, you know, we put students like Parker and Jake and Charlie and Taylor, not to, you know, continually bring those names up, but if you want to see superstars, these are the ones for our department that I would consider, you know, some of our superstars. And give them the opportunities to lead clubs. So they take what they learned in the classroom, apply it in an environment where it's still an educational experience and provide an educational experience for other students. And, you know, whether it be our real estate club, our finance club, our communications and promotions squad, the global economics club, or any other things that come out of DECA or our, our learning experiences, it's, it's a wonderful thing, I mean, to see these kids grasp these concepts and really make them their own. And, you know, as far as cap squad or finance club or real estate club, we've got other experiences that have happened in the classroom where we had a class of students actually work on the budget that you guys approved. They worked with Dr. Ravel over the period of about two months and they helped him draft and craft that budget. So the budget you saw was the work of people like Parker and Jake and the capstone class that we offer. And really the vision is to provide more of these experiences. And if you think about, you know, the way the world works with agency work, with marketing and advertising, it's really, I'd love to see our classrooms become the marketing agencies for the district and for the town. So that if somebody had something they wanted to promote, they would approach Mr. Mackey or I, give us the opportunity and say, here's what we need, what can you do? And really kind of run with it. So that's kind of where we're at from a, in a nutshell. And I appreciate the time from the, from the committee tonight. Thank you.
And the clubs that Mr. F was talking about happened during the high school schedule. It's during that wind block period. They actually strategically happen Tuesdays, Thursdays, Fridays. So we're trying to find every lever that we can to get kids to explore their voice and choice and chase their passions. So it's a great opportunity within the high school schedule that we have. Another piece that I, I think it's one of our paramount duties is to nurture student leadership. And you're going to hear from the Fly Foundation gentleman, but also if you remember the course selection process, when we proposed the new fashion marketing and design course. So Savannah and Bailey were here. They were highly invested in seeing that get approved. And they've done a great job. They had an amazing presentation, before school presentation, the Wednesday mornings, delayed starts, a lot of these initiatives that you'll hear of Fly Foundation or students leverage happen on Wednesday morning. So we're trying to capitalize on, on those times as well. You know, Savannah and Bailey had amazing, four amazing professions from various sectors, talk about their career experiences, trying to motivate our students, particularly women in this case, to take on leadership roles and empower them. And so you'll hear a little more story about that from the Fly Foundation folks. A little bit of breaking news. Everybody loves breaking news. We had an amazing, I would say it was an amazing phone conference last week with DESI, Mr. Driscoll and Mr. Burkhead, right? Some good news, we, throughout the fall, we engaged in a two-part application process with DESI for what's called Innovation and Career Pathways. There are several pathways to pursue. There are six at this point. We wanted to start with two that we felt really strongly about, chase the passions of department chairs and departments. So we applied for two, business and finance and environmental and life sciences. So what are these experiences? What is Innovation Career Pathway? The best analogy I can create is considered a focused, a focus of students is they engage in their high school trajectory of classes. It consists of coursework, experiences, clubs, internship, practical time at a workplace for them to explore, whether it be, in this case, business and finance or environmental life sciences. Why didn't we pursue this? Well, quite simply, since we've started the process, we've broadened our networks. We've had great PLCs through DESI, through subcommittees and groups of this work. We've built a really nice bridge with our local mass hire organization. We look forward to continuing with local area organizations. I'll talk about that a little bit through our internship program. So it's really exciting. And Mr. Driscoll, we've been grant funds, which is a very big part, you know, of this as well for our students to help with the implementation and trajectory of this. And, you know, these are things that we had rooted in. We were piloting for a couple of years and Heidi's leadership, conversation, especially, got to check this out. Like you're doing a lot of the work already and it was a great process. I'd want to give a quick shout out to the core application team of Julie Ward, Patrick Newton, Lisa Kirk, myself. That's weird, shouting out myself. Good job, me. And then collaborators, Shawna Ella, Marcavious Barnes, Janet Downing, and Tammy Rundle, also collaborators in the process, application process. The, the application process was quite detailed, focused on five core principles, being equitable access, guided academic pathways, consistent of technical courses and advanced courses. Also enhanced student support, so how can we provide services to students that might need them, whether they're special education students? We did mock schedules for students to make sure that everybody could be part of the pathway. Career connections, like I said, with the $100 of internship or capstone experiences. And what I love, passionate about is the nurturing of partnerships. The more we connect with people outside of this building, more students see the relevance in meeting it and the work. So we received in our conference, on our conversation, the Jennifer Guatin from DESI. I, I think it was, she said that she'd be recommending us for approval come May, so a formal announcement come May. But I asked her if I could make this announcement tight and she gave us permission. Could you resell me at any point with that name? Um yeah, we talked about the career connections and outreach and, yeah, in January, we had a, a set sale showcase um for eighth grade families. Um and one of my station that was sharing the outreach, uh the internship opportunities. Um that blue link links to my entire, the entire slides. If you have time, I highly encourage you to take a peek at it. Uh this is just a quick snapshot of one of them. Um in this case, it was, it was Zach and Mr. Sarawak and Caldwell Bank of Realty. Survey feedback from students. I mean, it's, it's an almost, it is, it's an elective within an elective. I work with every student to chase their passions, whether it's automotive or being an attorney. We work to help students explore those passions that they have. Uh I had a few uh longtime colleagues review the slideshow recently because they just started asking questions about some students. And, and independently, all three of them said, the one thing I noticed in all the pictures in the slideshow was that the students were smiling. The students were happy and um, and that's really gratifying to see uh students so happy because they explore passions that they have. Yeah, this is a, uh as of last Friday, uh we've got potentially a couple more placements on here as well, uh but it's an extensive list of, of variety of vocational endeavors that um from trades to cosmetology to farming to, I mean, it's oral surgery. It's pretty an amazing array. So I, my gratitude to our community sponsors and the people that work with us is very deep, I guess.
Uh I, I wanted to just, um I was just curious, um when I looked at this list, I can imagine what most of these um internships would look like, but I was curious about the ones in our elementary schools. If you could just say a little bit more about what that partnership looks like.
That's one of the ones that I love the most. Um it's to see a high school student say that they, being a teacher, say that they want to explore being a teacher. Um I always tell them like, this is easy. This is the most easiest placement we have is because our elementary schools and schools and principals and teachers are just amazing uh sponsors. They love working with our juniors and seniors. Um I'm gonna give a quick testimonial of, of a student who did an internship to junior and senior year, Ashley Rumpel. Who is absolutely gonna be a colleague of us someday, if she wants to be. She's uh works at ILC, PLC over, over at Happily and she's done that for two years and they rave about her. They, she's incredible. She's allocated a couple of blocks of her school day. Um she had a, a, a sale block in her schedule and she's like, I don't wanna sell a block, I wanna double up on my internship. And again, another beauty of, in addition to the wind block we have on our schedule is the morning after in rotation. Uh it's, for some students it's what keeps them in school. Um it's at least five students I worked with this year, I would question whether they would still be on the trajectory of graduation. They would take their core classes, A, B, C, D in the morning and in some cases, E, F, G and H in the afternoon from lunchtime on, they're working at an, at an internship. I guess the, the highest, it's amazing, I'll give, and I could talk about each one of these kids for hours. I have a student working at Wilder Brothers, he interns there at three o'clock, he punches in and gets paid till the end of the day. Bud Wilder, who's an amazing sponsor, uh has taken upon itself to reach out to the parents of, of the student and said your son has a job waiting for him on graduation if he wants it, if he's not a, a college bound student that has health insurance and matching 401K. Like, that's pretty amazing. Um we've got students that are in the cosmetology, they're like, they're sponsored to helping them get the certifications and licenses that they need. And that's one end. The other end of the spectrum, we have attorneys, pediatricians, it's, 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 it's really lucky. Uh we, we are lucky. As a community, we're lucky to have the amazing people. I'm hoping that people here, they say, hey, let me, uh, bring her in, see if we can talk because I will build a bridge with anybody that wants to work with our kids. And then most important part is that matchmaking process, right? That the fit, it has to be a good fit, it has to be mutually beneficial because if not, it's a burden for this one thing. It's not gonna be a burden, one win-win, win-win matches. Thank you for asking the question. Any, that help, I mean, so every elementary school, middle school, we've had, we have kids placed this year. Uh and one, uh no, I told you it was an extender. We had eight students that took the internship experience in the fall, it's a semester-based experience and eight of them said, mm-hmm, I'm staying on, I, this is just going so well, I don't wanna stay on. And a couple of those are in the elementary schools, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, thanks for asking the question.
Great, awesome, awesome follow-up. First of all, I apologize for being late, but um, thank you for presenting.
I can start over.
Nope, I'm gonna text, I have it here. Um so I guess two questions, number one is, you said you had eight that were in their staying, but how many in total students are participating in some sort of internship?
Right now, there's thirty in this cohort, actually thirty-one, is one that um is flexing at G Block and um it's part of the student's transition plan or IP. We're trying, this is actually junior, building a nice bridge with an interior design company, in fact, it goes well, we'll hopefully work that into the student's schedule for next year. So there's thirty right now, there were twenty-eight in the fall and mostly a seniors right now. I think there was one junior, but uh last person I missed in is two juniors now. Both of the juniors are both in education, they both wasn't, uh both were at Walmite actually. Um but it's mostly seniors, so it's almost a third of the senior class, pretty much engages in this experience and it just honestly continues to grow. We had a setback with COVID and now it's like, thank.
No, I think it's great. And the next question is, how do students, if they're not listening to this meeting or here, how do they know about these opportunities? Is this something that, that guidance would discuss them with? Do you reach out or does a student reach out and, and if so, who does a student reach out to to kind of be aware of these and to get these going?
So Mr. F, Mr. Mackey and I have visited every, um through a collaborative process with social studies department, we visited every student in this building in, uh over a three-day period um to discuss opportunities and electives. And we tailored by grade, right? So juniors and seniors would share this information. We also shared at the, you know, as a primer at the eighth grade step up night, right? That's gets people excited, like, these are opportunities that I have um for me as I enter my high school career. And it's, so it's discussed with families and it's early, it's eighth grade and students throughout the process and every counselor. Um actually, I, I said tribute to our counselors. Remember I talked about like some, some students have the EFG in the afternoon rotation. It's a very thoughtful collaborative process with the, uh to make sure that that's meets they have all the graduation requirements in place and that meets that student's needs.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
I have another question to that. Do they need to be in the business pathway and taking that track?
No, the internship, uh so, great question. Uh the internship program started way, I started at fifteen, uh actually George had that, ended over to me about fifteen years ago, I took it over. Uh this is, um, the business pathway, you will need a hundred hours to be part of the business pathway, but the internship program's open to any vocation, right? So it happens to be, I mean, there's career standards in the business education department, so I've overseen that, but you, um, so anybody can be part of that. I've already have students now, like, hey, I'm interested in engineering, I'm like, great, let's work now to find a placement now for fall. Um there's some that I'm actually wanna try to explore for the summer, like a deeper dive for kids over the summer, so. Hope that helps. Mr. Mackey, you've got a big room for the kids, all right. Uh our student spotlights, uh so we'll start with Taylor and then we'll have the Fly Foundation boys back down next to them. And I think it's really important, you know, I can start about this other one. I can use testimonial of the students and share them. What we need to hear is from our students. Um and so Taylor, you have the floor, could you just tell us, um, you know, um, some highlights of your high school career? And then where you're going, what you're gonna be doing next year?
Yes, of course. Hello, everyone. I am so excited to be here tonight to share my story in the business department. Actually, I got involved with this department because they loved my junior year, so fairly recent because I'm a senior now. But I decided to take a sports marketing class. You know, I didn't know anything about marketing, but I loved sports, I was like, count me in. And little did I know that that decision would truly change my life. And I'm not exaggerating when I say that, um it's straight from the heart. The amount of opportunities I've had from presenting at Gillette Stadium, like Mr. Mackey mentioned earlier, in front of a craft organization, you know, representative. That truly, they changed the way I thought about my career. I realized and I was like, I'm going to do this for the rest of my life. I stood up there and I felt like this was my purpose. And as you can see up on the board, um I actually have more of those opportunities as I expanded and got more involved with this department. I actually worked with Mr. F to create the Communications and Promotions Club. I told him the day I walked into sports marketing, I'm going to work for the National Basketball Association. That was a goal of mine and it still is. And so he did everything possible to make that happen and give me the experience I needed in high school. And so from there, we just took off and we created the CAPSquad and, you know, the resume I put together is incredible. I mean, you can see a clip up there of me interviewing a student, which is truly my passion. I mean, I love interviewing, I love recording, I love editing. Below that photo, I actually was very lucky. Um I went to Gillette Stadium again for the Situate Sailors. They went to the Super Bowl in two thousand twenty-three, it's a summer last year, and that was incredible. I mean, I was the student sideline reporter. So I had full access to the tunnel, I was on the field, I was interviewing the coaches, the players, all the students. I mean, I will never forget that opportunity, I will never forget that. And it just, like I said, it just kept going. Um right next to that is me and like with my podcast equipment, I actually did start my own podcast. So it's called Let's Talk About Mental Health, there's a flyer right next to there. And I brought that to the state DECA competition over the weekend. And like I said, I joined DECA this year and the opportunities and the creations I've done are endless. I mean, I started my own podcast. And it's what I love and I got to bring that to the state competition. I even got to participate in a district competition before that. And, you know, like if you look back, I mean, look at how much I've accomplished with only being a year and a half in this department. And it truly wouldn't have been possible without the support of Mr. Mackey, Mr. F and Mr. Riney. I mean, when I tell you that, I've never felt more supported from, you know, a group of teachers in my life. I really mean that. I mean, they believed in me, they never gave up on me and it's, it, like I said, it's only been a year and a half. And I'm truly, truly thankful for everything. I mean, I've had the privilege to work with each one of them individually through DECA, sports marketing and beyond. And, you know, to create this club, communications and promotions, so I can give this opportunity to other students who are just as passionate as I am. I'm so, you know, it's fair to say to leave, but I'm so thankful that my efforts in working with them, I can create more students opportunities and for future generations to come. And I
You're growing, we're too.
I mean, like I was just gonna mention, I mean, if it wasn't for taking the sports marketing class my junior year, I don't know whether I'd be majoring in, because I'm actually majoring in sports marketing at Pace University in New York City this fall. So like I said before, I am incredibly thankful from the business department for believing in me and seeing the vision and never giving up my dreams. So thank you for listening to my story.
Uh good evening, school committee, thank you for having us here. Um my name is Charlie Harwell, I'm a senior here at Situate High School.
My name is, my name is Jake O'Malley, I'm also senior here at Situate High School.
My name is Parker Hausman, I'm also a senior here at Situate High School. And I just wanna start off by thanking the business department, Mr. Riney, Mr. Mackey and Mr. F for their undeniable support and inspiration in our business experiences here at Situate, from founding a financial literacy nonprofit to clubs to a podcast, to uh participating in all the pre-existing clubs. It's been an incredible experience and we're very lucky to have benefits of the, the program here. And I'm gonna give it off to Charlie, just to start off discussing some of the clubs that we started.
So um how we kind of started our venture with forming clubs here is uh one day in Mr. F's class, coincidentally, me and Jake, uh we came up with the idea for a real estate club. And then from there, it all kind of snowballed. We became presidents of the already existing finance and investing club. And then we uh founded the Global Economics Club. So we kind of meticulously chose which clubs to form based on what we thought was important in business. So we kind of just chose three topics that we thought kids would be interested in, so finance and investing, real estate and economics. And um from there, it kind of all took off. Forming the real estate club originally was kind of a shot in the dark because we didn't exactly know how many kids would be interested in real estate. It's kind of a niche topic. But uh like Mr. Matthew was saying earlier, we, we only served as facilitators for this, as the business department teachers were educators. We wanted to give students a, a space outside of the classroom to pursue their passion in real estate. And um people actually did show up surprisingly. They, I mean, there's a block in the day where kids can go and they can sit on their phones, they can just do nothing, but they chose to come and learn about real estate club. And now all those clubs, they take up every wind block available in the week. And so it's been a great success so far and it would not be possible without the help of the business department teachers.
Alright, so I just wanna talk a little bit about uh Fly, so our financial literacy nonprofits. Basically, during this time when we were starting these um clubs, so me and Charlie, we really started the real estate club and then we kind of started the global economics and kind of grew. We wanted to kind of incorporate these three um different clubs into kind of one thing. So it was like three young entrepreneurs, we were thinking like, okay, what can we do to kind of bring these three together? So we came up with Fly, so we, we, it's called Financial Literacy for the Youth. So we kind of started with, okay, the original idea was, okay, maybe we could bring these clubs to other schools, maybe expand it. We were like, why don't we just bring these together? We kind of wanted to connect students to the real business professionals. And kind of like, the idea was to bring, so create some networking events for students to actually come, maybe eat some food and learn about different topics for like an hour, hour and a half before school. So me, Charlie and Parker decided to create the Fly Foundation. Um I think it was about a year ago. So we decided to create a nonprofit so that we could take grant funding that in Shore. So we requested a grant, I think last spring. And we were granted, I think, eight hundred dollars to basically put on some um network events, networking events um this fall. So basically, we were able to like kind of encourage people that were in these clubs that we've already been doing for other years. We the people that were kind of leaders in these clubs to help us create this nonprofit. And along the way, we met amazing people from um Leo Rosansky, like a multimillion dollar uh real estate professional, to Gavin Lennard, an entrepreneur from UMass. Um who are actually able to help um come into the school and allow us to put on like a networking event. So to kind of like give students an opportunity to sit down, not necessarily um engaged much in this one, but kind of just like listen to like what someone maybe like five to ten years ahead of them have done with the opportunities. So Gavin Lennard, I think he went to BCI, but he went to UMass and kind of started his own private equity fund. Um basically, he's like, I think he's like twenty-two, twenty-three years old. And kind of the opportunities that they create for themselves and kind of like the leadership qualities that they kind of found were successful. So yeah, this is, and with the Fly Foundation, we've, we've hosted three of these events so far and we actually, so we've raised over eleven hundred dollars of grant funding. And kind of with this, as it blended these three clubs together, we were able to encourage a lot more students, big students who weren't really into business originally, but kind of like bring them into the business program. And kind of with the um advising from Mr. Riney, Mr. F and Mr. Mackey, they were kind of able to help us create these events. So yeah, um and recently, we're able to start a podcast called the Financial Flyover Tip. So it's been really cool, really cool experience learning how to um, how to like start our own entity, I guess, the own nonprofit. Um yeah.
Will you guys share what your visions are? Will you, will you leave us? Where are you going? What are you doing?
Obviously, based on attendance and different interest levels demonstrated, we have students in mind for each club and your overall nonprofit takeover. And this is something that has really grown, like it's good, like kind of transition. This has grown into something bigger than ourselves, just us three. It started as us three, you know, clubs and then kind of another club and another club and then the nonprofit and then like professionals coming in. But now, I mean, we have twenty team members. We have social media marketers, operational managers, talent coordinators, people who are just helping reach out to the situation to write newspaper articles where you can look up a situation and several articles of the networking events. And we have advisors from Mr. Riney, Mr. Mackey, Mr. F, Mr. Mattisop, and this goes on and on and on. And it's, it's grown so big to the point where now we have to hand it off, because this is, we weren't initially even sure this was gonna work. And now we have to figure out how to continue it because we just fall in love with it. And it's just been an opportunity provided by the business department that if we didn't have the original exposure through maybe DECA to these business competitions or the Credit for Life Fair to Financial Literacy, where we were, we weren't able to become senior ambassadors, thanks to Mr. Riney, and competing in the regional and state and international level competitions. Our love for business was ignited. And I know us three, we were pursuing finance majors in the fall. And if we didn't have the opportunities given by the business department, who knows where we would have ended up. But I feel But I feel like we really learned where we thrive in these business clubs and the nonprofit. Um, yeah, it's been an overall amazing experience. And there's so many faculty members along the way that have helped us from Mr. um, yeah, Ms. Patterson from scheduling the pack and then the, the space provided by Mr. Mackey and the marketing from Situation and the grant funding from Shore. And it's just been a community-wide initiative that has been amazing to see grow. And yeah, I hope it does continue to grow in the future. And if you want to learn more information, you can look up flyfoundation.net. And there's more about all these clubs and photos and some amazing students that have done some amazing things.
Sorry, where are you going in the fall?
Well, I'm undecided at the moment, but I'm between some good schools. Um, just got into UNC, so that'll be good. And wait a couple more.
Are you gonna study?
I'm gonna study finance.
Um, I'm between a few schools right now. Northeastern and Babson. I'm gonna probably study finance and entrepreneurship.
I'm going to Boston College next year, also to study finance.
Unfortunately, with Ms. Wristle leaving us, she's gonna miss our course in smart brevity. We're gonna be launching next year, but I don't know, it's hard to make this brief and, and uh, and um, so. We utmost gratitude for your time and appreciation for the opportunity. Hopefully, we make you proud and uh, more importantly, the students are in good hands. So thank you so much for your time. Any questions? Oh, yes.
Any questions?
Yeah, yeah, I was thinking of that.
Yes. I just have one question. I got an email from an eighth grade student a, a couple days ago who's doing a civics project and is interested in career exploration classes in, in eighth grade or in the middle school. And um I wanna definitely share this Fly Foundation with that student because I feel like it's a really cool example of like students taking initiative and you know, what can come of that. But I was just curious, um, this is all awesome. It's so amazing to hear. I love just the passion with which everyone has spoken, students and teachers alike. Um, and it looks like this eighth grade student might be interested in trying to emulate some of that and bring it down to the lower middle school grades. So I was just curious if you have plans or yeah, I'd love to just hear.
I have more than good news. Uh, so part of the Pathways Grant is our um adopting this my, my cap program. Uh, my career and academic plan. Uh, it's a six through twelve trajectory of experiences. And we've already started our school counselors and folks that connected with the Pathways. I've started the PD process. Uh, and so it's gonna take some time, right? We're gonna launch in, in middle school, we're gonna start with grade nine and add each, a grade each year. Uh, but some of that career exploration piece is, is absolutely in the works. And that's part of, part of the expectation of the innovation grade pathways. Um, district is, it moves down to this low a sixth grade, you know, speakers and that whole reflection process, my likes, my dislikes, and what do I hopes and dreams. Uh, so that's um some exciting news. And you know, uh, other piece too is Gates has IBCs. There was a student that reached out and went, hey, could we do an investing IBC at Gates? I'm like, well, let me, let me get the Pathways Grant and we can keep nudging our way down, right?
Yeah.
Uh, so.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, very, I mean, in five years, when, next time I, uh, talk about something like this. Oh, actually, just in five years, I can't wait to see the growth in five years. So hopefully back next year, it's gonna be great things. No, no, I love it. I'll be here forever. Long time.
Um, I don't even know where to start because I think the passion that all these students feel is, it's like overwhelming. I almost think I'm about to cry. It's talking about the passion you feel for your job, um, that, well, that you will have. Um, because it's so important that I tell my, my, my kids, whatever, you know, what, what do you wanna? They said, what should I do? I said, whatever you do, make sure you like it because it's gonna be your job and you really should enjoy what you do. And not every kid finds out early on what they wanna do and that's okay. But it's just so fantastic that you guys have already like, you know what you wanna do and you just, you can see that you're passionate and you're gonna love it and you're gonna be great at it. So thank you for all, Mr. 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 F and Coach F and Mr. Aneary and Mr. Mackey for um helping these kids find their way.
My pleasure.
Thanks.
Yeah, no, great job. I love it. It's awesome. Thank you, guys. Obviously available at any point for a follow-up presentation.
It doesn't have to be short. It just has to be substantive and you know.
Okay, hopefully it was, hopefully the substance was there. Yeah, excellent. Thank you. Have a great night, guys.
Thank you all so much.
Yeah.
All right, Dr. Ab, this is the finance.
This will be more exciting.
Sure. I'm excited about this though. This is a big deal. Very big deal. We really should speak, shout it out.
Thank you very much. Uh, it was a joy working with the students in the fall. It really was. The two of us students that worked with you this evening, and I worked with six seniors in the class, and they were fantastic. It's a true testament to the business department. Um, normally, fund transfers aren't terribly exciting, but this one actually is. It's so, it truly is. So let me talk a little bit about it. So we're finally in the home stretch of closing out the Gates Middle School project. And we've submitted everything to the MSBA and we're still waiting for the possibility we can actually get a little bit more reimbursement. Um, but right now, there's one point eight million dollars left unspent in the borrowing that we did. So way back, we borrowed seventy-five million dollars and because the interest rates were so low, they didn't stage that borrowing. They borrowed the entire amount in seventy-five million. And so over the course of the project, that money was spent. And there's one point eight million dollars remaining. We have an opportunity to transfer that funding to the future Cushing Hathaway project. Now, clearly, if the project doesn't get voted, this whole vote would be moved. But the idea is we can reduce the debt on the town by using unspent funds in the Gates Middle School project. And I know tomorrow night, I don't wanna step on their thunder, but the Forrest Selectman is also bringing up a couple of other opportunities that Mrs. Holt has found of unspent remaining funds in other capital projects that are not school-related. Um, so all told, there's a good possibility that even more than one point eight million dollars could be transferred to the Cushing Hathaway project. And Mrs. Holt would like to write this into the motion for the special town meeting article, which is the urgency of the season. So uh simply, one point eight million dollars to the Cushing Hathaway project reduces the year-one impact from eight hundred and sixty-three to eight hundred and forty-three dollars and reduces per taxpayer at the nine hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar median household level we've been talking about. And reduces the twenty-five-year total uh impact from fifteen thousand nine hundred and forty-three to fifteen thousand five hundred and ninety. But as important, it reduces the amount of interest owed by the town by two point nine million dollars. And so this is an extraordinary opportunity to use unspent funds that have already been borrowed. They've already been appropriated. Um, way back in twenty twenty at special town meeting, the town rescinded anything that wasn't borrowed. So there's no unborrowed money in this account anymore. Um, and with the vote of the school committee, um, this alt can put this on a special town meeting ballot and, and reduce the overall debt for the Cushing Hathaway project. And, and for me, especially coming new to Situate, I've seen all these opportunities. People are looking for opportunities to save that and make it easier on the taxpayers and so.
Um, and did you say, when you did the calculation on how much it would decrease, was that just including the pieces that Nancy's gonna bring up at Fly? Or it could even be further reduction?
Exactly.
Okay. Do you know what, you don't have to know this.
I don't, I, I actually know how much the Forrest Selectman's going to be considering tomorrow, but I don't wanna step on it.
Okay, got it. Yeah.
No, I think this is great news to Tom, and I know that you're new and we should probably know more than you at this point relative to this. But can you just explain a little bit about the timing of this? Is this because of the whole sidewalk issue that we needed to resolve before they could close out the middle school project? Because this money theoretically has been out there for the last couple of years since the project was complete. But because of the sidewalk repair or sidewalk issue, this is just being delayed until now, assuming that has been resolved.
Exactly.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And there is an opportunity for more reimbursement from the MSBA once they close out their votes. And then it'll be a decision down the road how to appropriate those funds.
Really? What do you think the likelihood of that additional reimbursement is?
High.
Really?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll get a little more.
Great.
I'll take it.
That's awesome.
You would like us to vote this?
Please. The exact number is on one million eight hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred and seventy-one oh one.
Is that one? This one, this one? Uh, I'd like to make a motion to authorize to be included in the special town meeting motion the transfer of one million eight hundred thirty-four thousand six hundred seventy-one dollars and one cent from the Gates Middle School project to the Cushing Hathaway project for the purpose of reducing the overall borrowing required for the Cushing Hathaway project.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, and that will be reported to the select board so that, I just want them to be clear that we made our vote.
Absolutely. First thing in the morning.
Okay. Want them to know that for their meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right. The old business here with our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five calendar, calendar. You discussing this or?
Yeah, I think we already went over it. We're gonna vote tonight on it. Certainly discuss it as well.
Anything? I just have one question. Um, and this might have been already discussed. I'm just not to speed, but I was just wondering if on the days that we cannot hold school because of elections, if there's any other like way around that? Like for the small, like there's a primary, state primary, I think, on September third this year. And so that's, I mean, I don't know, a smallish turnout compared to what we're expecting in November, in which case I can see like we definitely need the high school uh gym. And we need a ton of parking and all of that stuff for, for some of these smaller um elections. I was just curious if we've ever explored, because I just, then, then it just means that the voting drives the school calendar more than we might want it to, you know? Same thing with the recent primary on March fifth, kind of meeting that we had to move the PD day and all that stuff. Um, so I was just curious if that's something that we've ever talked about or who even we might approach to say? Like, is, are there some creative solutions around this?
Yeah, you should say that because it's been a frustration of mine and I did reach out to Mr. Woodrow recently after we had this last issue, we had to move a date. And I'm like, wow, spending all my time here working around the elections and things I don't typically think about like that. So um, you can say on the major elections, obviously, that would be tough. But he'd look into and discuss the select board at some point or consider alternative venues. I guess he'd look at parking and those things. But you know, with some help from the school committee to talk to, you know, select board folks and to get, get that discussion happening would be helpful as well. Ultimately, you know, they would make the call on that. But I think, like you said, for the smaller ones, maybe that's, I don't know the places as well as maybe you all do. But I think, you know, I did bring that out recently and he said he'd look into it. He said that big ones, probably not, but the smaller ones, maybe. So I could follow up with that as well, but you know. But it's, it's a great point because we are driven by that unfortunately and it's not ideal for our PD or our student learning or, you know, I think like this, Woodrow brought up. Every day we miss is a day made up after, after the fact with a lot of us stay testing and things like that.
Things have also changed with early voting, yeah. Okay, it's not as good.
Just out of respect for Ms. Woodrow's earlier comments, maybe we just spend a minute. I mean, I know, I think, if I understand correctly, we can't adjust this year's calendar, even if we wanted to because of the teacher's contract, isn't that right? In terms of going before Labor Day, we can't adjust that. So you, you were asking for reasons, so one of them is contractual. It would have to have a discussion. Um, but I'm wondering sort of philosophically where my colleagues sit or stand with that, curious.
I've always been okay with starting before Labor Day, for the record. And especially years where Labor Day is later. I mean, it's, you know, it doesn't make, I always look at the calendar. I'm like, you know, we could have had like three days in September before Labor Day.
Yeah, I had um asked a couple of people in Marshfield, for example, they have a set date. If Labor Day is after this date, they will um start school before. That could be something to look into. I think I definitely, as a working parent, have felt the squeeze of no childcare and like just feeling like, oh my gosh, everyone else is back at school and here we are still not in school. And that is a really tough period of time childcare-wise. Um, I would be really curious to know what the teachers also think, just about the academic, like, you know, the academic point of like needing those extra days. It makes sense to me, but I've, I've never heard kind of like, do teachers also feel that way? I imagine they might, but I don't know. So that was one thing I was thinking about. I was also wondering about, maybe it's time to redo the survey. I think last time the survey was like pretty fifty-fifty, but that was a number of years ago now. Um, I think there might be more, like the, the composition of families might have shifted towards more working families. And so I would be curious maybe to try that.
And I, I think there probably were less towns having school before Labor Day because a lot more now.
That's true.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I think my kind of viewpoint is a couple. One of them's a little bit odd. But one is, um, I think it depends on when Labor Day is. Like if it's late, then you should have the opportunity to start earlier. If it's September first, second, then obviously it's different. The other thing is, in addition to the, I wasn't here from Ms. Woodrow's comments, but I can assume some of what she included is that we're missing, as she mentioned before, we're missing some days of learning prior to the, you know, MCAS and other assessments. The other thing is, um, I'm gonna shift it to climate. I don't know if it's technically warmer in the end of August or the end of June because if we're putting the kids and staff in the schools in those warmer days, we might wanna think about that as well. I don't know if there's gonna be a significant difference, but I haven't really looked at the average temperatures. I know it's kind of funky, but it might be something worthy to look at. Maybe the average temperature is five degrees warmer in August and we might wanna continue with our current schedule or vice versa. I don't think there's a significant difference, but something that I think is important as climate is changing and getting warmer.
I, I, that was one of my only hesitations is we've gotten a lot of um feedback from parents about the heat days and things and those do tend to be more August, September than June.
Yeah.
Um, but, and I think the teachers' contracts, it's, they can't start earlier than the Monday before Labor Day. So technically, it's our decision on what we, when we start. And there was that time, I believe, we, it's a while ago, just like before COVID that we, I don't know what we did. We almost voted and then we didn't. We were split or something happened. I was a little dramatic. I can't remember.
I like Maria's suggestion to survey folks in, in addition to asking the teachers. Because I think the thing I wonder about is while I get that we would be adding a number, extra days, right? Number-wise, we would be going up in, in terms of how many days. But I'm just curious about quality, like what's going on in those first couple of days? And then you have the disruption of Labor Day, right? You sort of get going and then you take a, a long weekend. And so I would just, again, I'd like to know from the teachers in terms of quality days. And I completely understand, having come from Maryland, which has a very big economy based on oceans, I understand the sort of beach town and, and wanting to shift priorities. But at the same time, if we're talking about losing babysitters and needing childcare, that's not necessarily focused on education either, right? Like it's just, or, or something, it's gonna be a trade-off no matter what we do, is what I'm saying. So I think hearing from the teachers and the, and the town, just to sort of, you know, get a bead on folks would be a good idea.
Yeah, I, I think that's, I agree. I think it's good to get a new sort of,
Yeah.
kind of as Ms. Woodrow, Ms. Woodrow mentioned, you know, families change, priorities change, time happens. And we should be, uh, probably it is absolutely time. I feel like it's been at least six years maybe since we've, you know, looked into it deeper than just the general pulse.
Yeah.
Um, I like the sort of, you know, if it is fifty-fifty or thereabouts, I agree with Ms. Fenwick on, um, you know, kind of doing a split. If it's particularly late, then we would. It makes much more sense to go earlier as, you know. Uh, but I do agree with you on the Mr. Gates's comments about, um, there are, I, I know like kids have had heat days in other districts as well and it's like, that's not funny. So I don't know that there's a, we completed the masses, but we should do what's best for the majority. And if the shift is towards before Labor Day, we should, should be listening to those, that, that larger group.
Can I also just ask about the half-day question?
Oh, yeah.
Do half-days count as school days? I actually don't know.
Yes, they do, on school days. And with that twenty-second came out, it's worth a point of discussion because it wasn't there a few years back and then- Christmas came on a Monday or something and a lot of, we had like nobody in the school, a lot of absenteeism next, last year, I think it was four days out, so it was still kind of close because we went to half-day, worked out well, our attendance went up, people stayed because people were on vacation, leave early, so that was based on the attendance, really, we weren't getting folks there when it was counting as a day, but nobody was there, so we said, okay. We make it a half-day, we get our attendance up and we're able to get something done. So that's where that is, where it's five days now. I'll leave that open to you, but I wouldn't have a problem making that a full day or not, but that's been the rationale behind it that Friday before. Holidays was cutting it close now as it moves away, it's longer, you know, that could be a considerable day if we wanted to.
I think much like the discussion of when to start Labor Day, you can have, you know, the same goes for when to have that half-day, and it makes sense if if Christmas is like the following Monday, but if it's a week away.
Yeah, it's flexible, depending on the year.
Yeah, that's kind of Wednesdays that we're, four or five days, we left it in there and then next year if it's six, that would be an easy one to where it would be a full day, so that's kind of where we fell in that. But we are watching it. Yeah, like a week.
It goes a wrench.
And as far as the the starting for Labor Day, Labor Day, I took some notes here, what I can do is put together maybe a presentation with, before you do some research on that with the weather, got our own resident expert weather person here, Mr. Maguire, I'm sure would love to take that challenge on. So I think we can get some really good local weather, seriously, and then get the surveys out before the end of the year. Meet regularly with the teachers, we can get the feedback on the teachers, I can compile that into one little presentation for you and, you know, may not impact this year, but the following year we can get a jump start. And have good information, good feedback from the community, good feedback from the staff and be in a good place for you to make a better decision for the following year.
And just to one former comment, I feel like we've gotten away from snow days and it's like other natural disaster days. Like power and trees and it's crazy.
We, I joke with this, we're in like a little phone chain with the local superintendent's glass at Marshfield, Duxbury, Norwell and Hanover, just on, you know, when the weathers are coming. And some of the veterans talk about that, like I miss the days of like when it's going to be ten to twelve inches of snow, I know it, that's an easy one. And now with all this power outages and weather and with the tides and it's really become a lot more complex, you're right. There's been more weather event days than there have been snow days in the last three years.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. February fifth being a half-day. On this draft, it's marked as a half-day, but it's not explained why, and I feel like I don't remember why. And also, I feel like people are gonna have that same question, it's a Wednesday. It just says half-day and I don't know why.
That's a elementary parents conference day or something, I will bring it back, so, but I will, I agree with you, that should be clarified because it's not.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Was there another one you saw? This one we're on there, was it February fifth?
No, I think the others are all marked. I was just trying to think about if there's any way we can get schools to not end on the twentieth, the day after Juneteenth, just because it's always a half-day and so it's like, just makes the end of the year so anticlimactic for teachers, for kids, it's just tough, you know? But I don't know where else we would squeeze in.
It's the unfortunate snow day thing.
Except September third, we could, if we could start the day earlier, that would.
And yeah, but then don't forget provided we have zero weather days. So anything can knock us, it's really tough. But I see.
No, I'm just, I'm just looking at that December twentieth half-day.
Yeah, that was from a student initiated, that half-day.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, it's nice, I just, I know it's always a problem, obviously the day before vacation starts, but you know, as you guys have indicated, Christmas isn't until Wednesday. I don't know if it's not gonna matter, it doesn't pick us up a day, just.
It already counts as a day, so it doesn't really do anything to like.
Just gonna give more people reason not to come, that's all. But it's fine, I just, I mean, it's a great, I mean, I'm looking, I'm like, oh, this is great, but.
Yeah.
But then the kids come, the problem is that the second is a Thursday, so they have, they're gonna have two days of school in two weeks. Which is, which is fine, it's good, it's just works out that way.
Short week back, yeah.
But like next year, we probably won't be there.
There's probably no reason to have a half-day there. Why is that more confusing?
Well, I think it's worth, I mean, I think what, to me, what we're highlighting is it's worth discussing these sort of marked days, like you were both saying, like, if it hits Labor Day at a certain time or if or if Christmas bumps up, you know, that we would do the, right, like you would do the automatic, do the half-day, and that's something that we could take up after we approve this year's calendar.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion.
I was looking at the format. Is this how it's gonna be to the the community? Oh, it's alright, that's not as busy.
No, it's actually. The, we have a new version, we've had two calendars, we had one for the staff and one, there was kind of a lot of stuff floating around there, so we tried to consolidate it into one and that one, it'd also be more detailed and specific and try to explain things out, so that one is the one we came up with and modeled after some of the other school districts that were using those.
Was there any discussion of like putting this stuff right here, like on the backside, because there used to be two sides?
Yeah, that was the whole thing, it's one on the page and people would just have it. And I think we've got the, also you get the opportunity there to go online, it's easier to post and, yeah, that's the feedback we got, is if people wanted to simplify, it was too much. Some folks like me might have to wear our cheaters when we read it, that's the only downside, yeah, but it is kind of user-friendly and all on one page.
Alright, I make a motion to approve that the school committee, no, approve the school calendar for the year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
This needs to get laminated version.
Take that.
Take that old school.
All teachers love laminated. Alright, leadership report. Dr. Adams.
Twice in one night.
Thank you. So we have some wonderful news. On February fourteenth, the financial forecast committee met, thank you, Ms. Fenwick and Mr. Gates for their participation on the committee. And our health insurance rates came in a little lower than expected. And that resulted in an additional two hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars for our school budget, FY twenty-five. So it was wonderful opportunity, wonderful news, and we took a look at the requests that we had from the department heads, the principals, systems superintendent, curriculum, all the way around, to try to think of some creative ways to use the funds. We took a look at enrollment, we took a look at what we know right now for next year, and so if you look at the second page of the memo that I, that I presented on the backside, we're breaking that down into mostly expenses. I, I think all along we've talked about salaries, trying to make sure that we keep our salaries, number of salaries under control. However, we are adding an additional teacher or recommending to add additional teacher for seventy-five thousand, really a player to be named later, if I can use that term. You know, we're looking at kindergarten enrollment, we're looking at high school enrollment, we're looking at all the way around. Likely we will need another person somewhere, and I think this is an opportunity to embed that in the budget. And if we don't need it, we can talk about other ways to spend that money next year, so I think it's a good way to hedge against any enrollment spikes or any enrollment changes that happen over the summer and without having to re-convene, have that in the budget itself. The rest of the recommendations are all around expenses, and again, we've looked at the ongoing needs of all the schools, knowing that we have the Cushing Hathaway project coming forward, we had already added funding to Jenkins, Walthatuck and the high school. And so the recommendation is actually to accelerate that, and so we were able to add some funds to that in the regular FY twenty-five budget. But the recommendation this evening is to add a hundred thousand dollars to the high school expense budget for improvements here at the high school, and that really goes a long way toward not only possible improvements out in the foyer, improvements to furniture, fixtures and equipment here at the high school. We look forward to getting some students together, getting teachers together, getting people together, really do a walkthrough, we invite members of the committee, do a walkthrough of the high school, let's be thoughtful and see what we can do to really improve the conditions here at the high school. Similarly, at Walthatuck and Jenkins, while it's additional ten thousand dollars, the needs that we were able to do in the twenty-five budget didn't meet all the needs of those schools. And so we were recommending adding ten thousand dollars each to those building budgets so that the principals can use those for the same purposes, furniture, fixtures and equipment at those schools. And then finally, an additional fifty-three thousand dollars for our curriculum line. If you're going to make improvements to any curriculum, the most expensive one is math, always. It just, it just is, there's a lot of components to it, there's a lot of materials, training for the teachers, making sure that everybody has what they need for a successful math curriculum improvement. But this will also allow us to take a look and maybe accelerate some of the curriculum improvements in some of the other areas as well. So an additional fifty-three thousand dollars was welcomed, we talked to Mrs. Driscoll, and it really will help solidify not only a successful implementation of the math curriculum, but allow us to move forward in some other areas as well. So total of two hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-three for a new budget total of fifty-one million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars.
So, Tom, thank you for this, this is more great news for our budget tonight. So you've been to capital planning and I've been going and then Nicole has too, and so something that we always get asked about is our sort of maintenance budget, right, and so I just wanna sort of bring to light that you mentioned a hundred K for the high school and then ten K for the others about buying additional things. I'm assuming, because you're good stewards of our money, that this will not be at the expense of other things that might be in disrepair, right, that we're continuing to sort of make up for in future, I mean, previous administrations.
No, thank you for saying that. We actually heard clear capital planning and that was the primary, it could just be putting the budget.
Great, thank you.
No, I just wanted, Tom, thanks for doing this, as I very clearly presented and easily understandable for those that may not be involved day to day, but again, just a shout out to the town again for our financial forecast process that works great. Again, the reason that we ended up with these extra funds is that as, as Tom mentioned, there was a lower expense in the town employee insurance program essentially and a couple of other. There was an increase in revenue or one less student, I think they went to Votex or something like that, but ultimately with the formula that we have, we ended up with additional funds, so it's just a really great process that we have. I know other towns are fighting to get additional funds for their schools, we built the budget around what we originally had and then were able to do these great things, so I just wanted to thank, shout out and thanks to those, everyone that was involved in and in this process as we continue that going forward.
I did suggest a motion in the memo, it's like, yeah, it's great.
I make a motion that the school committee approve the budget amendment as presented.
Second.
I like Tom's line.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I have to go shout out about the language.
Look at him, he wrote a nice amendment. He wrote a nice motion.
It is, I should have read it into the record.
Alright. We are moving along here. DEI director report, Mr. Adams.
Hello, everybody. Here and at home, watching on tape and present. It's now.
Hello.
Yeah, there we go.
So anyone that is celebrating Ramadan, if I'm on that journey, which I just wanna say Ramadan, we rock, the folks that do that. And for anyone who wants to engage in our report regarding the dei, hafiz, and bidhan amendment, so let's go right into it. Hours are we? And we is us, and us be all, and all of us are situable public schools, SPS. We are the journey, on a journey of equity, slide deck to pride, check, check, check out our journey. We museum the beach, some of the accountability, no retreat, we retreat, the love that hate can't stop, we love. Always we, always love, we SPD with STEIC, athletic, the music, library, the academic excellence. Excellence is our sales set, we dream, explore, discover, we memorialize MLK, we are students for life. In this house, this is our house of lit, love, inclusion and trust, trust us, trust that, we are always we, we believe. And we believe. I can't see it on my screen, let me just go over there.
I'm like, you can see it.
We can see it, we believe and are not done yet, ever. And with that, folks, we present to you our equity journey. As a line with our strategic plan and an equity audit, here are our goals. Regarding human resources, the introduction to the lit ecosystem and student engagement. Regarding human resources, we want to make sure we begin to streamline our searches and to maintain equitable hiring practices. We want to inform all staff of our ongoing equity journey. I'll explain a little bit more as we go through what all of these mean, as we go through the rest of the presentation. We want to introduce our lit ecosystem, we now have the pieces in place to have that, but we need a mechanism to make that possible. And so we want to implement the lit ecosystem, which you can remind the folks, which stands for love, inclusion and trust, through our district lit committee. We want to do this and have this in place by twenty-four, twenty-five, the next academic year. Making our district lit committee the source and the curse on which all SPS equity efforts flow. And next, in regarding student engagement, we want to make sure that lit is an essential component of all staff and students experience as part of our mission. Now, we chose the timeline as a methodology of how to explain our journey since twenty twenty-one. And because that was the best way to explain kind of what is happening, because we've been working, put a lot of things into place since then, and so this timeline gives a trajectory of what that is, and as you can see, we are on fire and the blue flame on the fly, which is the hottest part of the fire, and as you see, we go through each of the academic year. But first, first time we started, in the end of twenty-one, we addressed the slide deck accident, and it was at our middle school, which led to how we adjusted our best practices in addressing similar circumstances and keeping those things locally. But what we did, we took advantage of that opportunity to create teachable moments, we rallied the community, rallied the community with all kinds of signs of love, we had chalking, we had in-service learning events for students and staff without villainizing anyone, that wasn't, that wasn't the focus there, the focus was on bringing that community together. Then, right after that, we had our first ever first pride open mic, and that was done in conjunction with the community. Then the summer came, and then over the summer, we had introduced the lit platform and plan to our district leaders. Then we welcomed the SBS pledge, which was co-signed by students and parents and caregivers and department chairs, essential officers, school committees, so we all created what is that school pledge, we are situable public schools, we reflect family, education and each other, we are always we, we are the present and the future unified by love, inclusion and trust with scholars, family and together. That's the pledge, just wanted to remind folks of what that sounded like when it was. Next. Then we get to the fall, spring, small spring, sorry, twenty-one, twenty-two, we introduced this is our house, which is the community and identity affirmation event that happens at every school in our district. And then through this is our house, that again reaffirm everyone's membership in our community. We also began the lit team, the E school, which at the time had between six to twelve scholars on each team. They reintroduced the parental slash caregivers advisory group as well that same year. Then we started our community connection with the community conversation space, which is done in collaboration with our situable library. Then we had our first MLK memorial, then we started the cultural cuisine through our lit team, which is where our students on the lit team, they do some research on food connected to different countries. Then we started the cultural cuisine throughout lit teams, which is where our students on the lit teams, they do some research on food connected to different countries and how to connect to the people of the countries. And then they send that recommended, they sent actually several options to our dining team. And then the dining team finds out which one they can actually get their greetings for. And then they produce that actual product along with the history on our menu, on data that is there, the history of the food that's on the menu is shown in the cafeteria. And that usually happens within a month, two months time period. Then we have the lit podcast, which you get to hear members of our community and mostly our students talking about things connected to love, inclusion and trust. At the same year, unified sports was amplified a little bit more. We began to explore some equity moves regarding HR. And then we, the first thing we did was expand a little bit of what our SPS searches were, the engines that we were using across searches. But then at the same time, we had lost our current macro director at that time, so we had to enter on the record again. Then we started the first additionally wide announcements of heresies months, days of observance, inclusive of identity, abilities, spirituality, culture, race. And then we also began to have a regular maintaining, a regular presence of staff of color in all of our schools, where we intentionally were scheduling times where we were in all of the schools within our district. Professional development structure was enhanced through our lit short stops, meaning that we had to come up with more ways to talk about some of the efforts regarding equity and progressive development outside of the times that were just already in place. So once a month, at the time of the month, on the first Thursday of the month, we would have these things called short stops, where there are ten of them. And they're voluntary, not mandatory, and they complement the already in place progressive development opportunities. Then, let's see, we intentionally started adding the presence and voices of marginalized scholars and staff to the high school senior dinner and to graduation. This is done because we have students that come from Boston on a regular basis and we are a metro district. So it makes sense that there is representation during commencement and also during the senior dinner. To that effect, we wanted to make sure we have some representation of marginalized folks doing graduations as well, so that became true that year. And then I began serving as the liaison to our diversity, equity and inclusion council. And then we also created our first situational creative team, which is also, that's the first year we really got going. So a lot happened that first year. And just when you thought that was it, we went to the fall and spring of twenty-two, twenty-three, where we actually established our district lit committee, which is comprised of department chairs, staff and principals. Then we had to do another Meiko search that same year, where we landed our coordinator at the end of that, that time. This is our house grew and it became more involved with students, where they were more engaged and more positive anticipation for the event to happen. So that was a view thing. It's less me talking, more the students talking about what love, inclusion and trust means to them and for them in our community. We also began neurodiverse This Is Our House, and that was out of a conversation with parents from Lit back actually, where for members of our neurodiverse community, we wanted to make sure that they showed the love as well. And if they wanted to be present for This Is Our House, they could be there. But if not, for any number of reasons that we understand, that we still show the love to those folks. On every place where we had neurodiverse folks, we did an additional bulk preliminary This Is Our House for those communities. And it was wonderfully wildly conceived. Let me continue to do that to this day. The pledge was meant to be shared in every elementary school. And so that was good, along with it being posted in all the schools on a banner after the pledge allegiance and announcements and birthdays and lunches and things like that, a pledge to share. Typically is shared by a student and a member of the lit team. Then we did equity audit, which was something that preceded my arrival. And what folks wanted to see to happen, so we had that take place. We developed a district lit website. We didn't have one prior. We also did our first meet and greet with the central police department, whereas we wanted to change the narrative and defeat the narrative that the police cannot work alongside and with folks of color. And so the chief and I, big shout out to the chief, we had conversations and we decided to make this happen along with Nick as well. And so we had the first installation of the meet and greet where all of the, the folks of color in our district met with the police department. We did two that first year where, because we had to meet the whole staff. We had to do two shifts because they changed shifts and things like that. So, and that went really well. The last one was just, the first one was just before the beginning of the basketball game, which ended up happening. And so it was good to meet folks before that happened and to continue to enhance our relationship with each other. Started doing lit lunches for folks that weren't able to participate in the lit teams, but wanted to have some conversations. So we did those primarily here at the, not here, but at the Gates Middle School. Then we piloted lit bedtime stories, which was an opportunity where parents volunteered to read a bedtime story that's geared towards elementary level schools. At seven fifteen, it lasted no more than fifteen minutes and connected to topics that are geared to a love, inclusion and trust. Then we had a lit open house that year, which is where folks wanted to just get some clarity on what lit was. I mean, they just had the library and it was there that folks, I think they were fine with what lit was and what it was all about. But then we also unearthed, there were some wounds that hadn't been addressed. And so maybe we may still get some of those things. On the heels of some work by superintendent, I was a giving a presentation. At that year, we spoke about lit on a more regional level with the New England Association of School Superintendents. And then also that same year, when we had a hate symbol show up on, in our community. And on the result, at the, on the heels of that, the situational love that hate can't stop slogan was introduced. And we had some magnets that also had the same quote that appreciate the folks along with the long signs. So we were moving, showing how we are, we are love and how we move with love. Then we get to the summer, and this is the first time where our school committee was like, hey, you know, other places doing this thing with their districts, those trainings and stuff, can we do it? Sure, why not? We're like, let's go with it. And so we did that and I think it was pretty successful and it was really meaningful for all of us involved. We spent some time particularly pertaining to lit and equity. We spoke about the MOO, which is a methodology for engaging in complex conversations. So we did some of that and that worked nicely. Then that same summer later, that summer, we had the museum beach incident and I'll have to get into the details of all of that. But what I will highlight there is that it showcased how much love is actually in the community. It showcased how the efforts that we've been putting forward all the way up till that point in time allowed us to shine. How much we care about each other, how much the community is about being a love that hate can't stop and that we wouldn't cower and face as many challenges at our adversity. And the amount of love that continued to flow from that moment is still resonating to this day. So another, a big shout out and huge love to everybody here, to the community. I can't thank everybody enough for show love on the heels of that. Then now we're here, this year, and we had another Meiko search. And this time, we landed our first full-time permanent director since twenty-one. Now, this is interesting, because I'm not gonna steal Sean's thunder, because Sean's coming in two weeks, gonna say a couple of things. But we have a legacy with Meiko. Meiko got started in sixty-six, we've had it since sixty-eight. So we have fifty-four years of Meiko in our DNA in the district. And so we're absolutely gonna be the flagship of what it is to have a Meiko affiliation as a district. That's without question. We are on that journey. We've been on it, but we're just gonna highlight it, highlight it, highlight it. And there's some things that'll be introduced and I'll leave that for Sean to share when he presents it in a couple of weeks. But I just something to note, something to celebrate, something to acknowledge, something to drive us, to fuel us to do incredible things. Yeah, right? Then we did a, we had a PD on equitable hiring practices happen this summer to help everybody kind of get in the zone. And this is just before the arrival of our new HR director. And so Ty will continue that journey with the, on equitable hiring practices with our, our team there. Then our freedom team was trained on the circle model for atonement and inhaling. This is an opportunity for folks to talk about issues that may have been hard to talk about in a community. This is where some of those open wounds you learned about and during the open house, lit open house, where we may use some of this technique to talk about some things. But we'll see what happens. But this, this model is, is designed for that. It's important to mention that our, one of the members of our freedom team that teaches this has been sought out by several other freedom teams to teach them how to do the circle model as well. So we are being reflected in other communities. Let's see, the lit teams this year at each of the schools, as you see, is growing. It, they are now being run fully by the staff of the schools. The first year, I ran them and they were like six to twelve students in them. The next year was about three hundred students that were on the lit teams throughout the school year. Then this year, we shifted a little bit. So it's a low, there was a change in number because of how we're writing it. But the important piece is that all of the lit teams again are being sustained by staff of those particular schools. And they are doing really, really well. We began something called a longitude of lit training on the ten principles of diversity. Whereas the district ride PD took place in November, there were ten folks that agreed to take on this, this component of learning the ten principles of diversity. But there was a mandate, a mandate connected to that if you do this, you have to connect every week on the ten principles. And so from March, I mean, sorry, from November all the way through March, the staff that has maintained connection every week. It has been wildly successful. They report, like remember, every member that has taken this longitudinal PD reports that it is helpful, it's meaningful, it kept them connected to the ten principles. And they are now placed to be trainers, to mentor other folks to do it as well. So that's the whole with that. Now the whole actually the plan that will happen there. Let's see, then the same year, through HR, we have a one pager. That's a place that once people are hired into our SPS family, they get the benefits package, all that kind of stuff. They also get a one pager that kind of explains what equity efforts are in the community. And then also we get a one pager that explains what Meiko is and what Meiko is not. This is so that folks no longer are not aware of what those things are. Along with these resources, we'll make sure that everyone in the district has access to them as well. These are also available on our, our district webpage as well. So we're upfront about all of those, everything we're doing. Proudly, we are a part of the launching of the statewide anti-organization, which is the Association of Massachusetts School Equity Leaders, which is a representation of my counterparts throughout the state that do this work. It's been recognized by the state itself, by the governor and by the secretary of that. So this is a great thing, which I represent us as the second vice president in that. Then we also were recipients of fifteen thousand dollars through a grant through our, at the Meiko district. And so we utilizing those funds to work with Dr. Anisa Monti Jackson. And she's working with our district lit committee on how we will roll out some of the things that we are working with regarding equity efforts and in particular, the ten principles of diversity and how love, inclusion, trust will connect with the rest of our district. That stay with me? You're good? You're good? Okay. Alright, just checking with folks. Then, here we are. Some additional things to acknowledge is that in this position, I believe it's more than just the DEI director. Connecting with students, families, students, the community and the region. I believe folks have strengthened their belief in what lit is all about and what it's doing. And that's about bringing people together and not dividing people. And it's about making sure that it represents all of us, not just a segment of us or cohort of us, but all of us. And again, always we, always love. And we show that to we, and then love. Visits to classrooms are often, and they, I'm invited to assist with content discussions. Also, we enhance our community connections. For example, the American Fiction film that happened just recently, that was an example of community, of our staff, of faculty and our students all come together to make this possible. We can watch it. And it also was, it was beautiful that an alum wasn't produced for it as well. And so that's just reflective of many things that have happened. This is really just a thumbnail shot of what has happened. The request for assistance through my position that I'm in is more than just equity efforts. So I'll just mention that to know that when we are really a part of the community, we are really part of, we supposed to see what we're doing as more than just equity efforts. We continue to create new best practices for our field and some of the things that we're doing here that are now past time to us for a lot, a lot of districts has not happened yet. And so they are looking to us to get, to be the example, looking for us for resources and asking us to share some of what we're doing with them. So we're proud of that and happy about that. We now, we, we hold a great accountability towards what we're doing because it's not only in our strategic plan, it's coming out of our equity audit, it's also part of our goals as mentioned earlier. And so with that, we have increased, an increased standard of expectation from students, staff and families as well. And so that is a quick look at what we have been doing since two thousand and twenty-one. I mean, that really is a thumbnail shot. There's, there's so much more there, but that is where we can pause at for right now. I can share also something that we're proud of is that over the break, we had our first lit sort of program, break programs happened, where we did a lit, folks asked and wanted, and we did a lit bedtime story over break and it was really well attended. So that happened. Our freedom team, again, is part of a freedom team network, because there are, so the folks know there are seven other freedom teams throughout the state. And I gotta also show appreciation to the community and the town for working with our, our Meiko folks again, creating beach passes that folks can purchase to be a part of the community. So I'll pause there and answer any questions and things like that. Sorry we're going fast, but just wanted to give you some thanks.
Questions? Yeah, thank you so much. It was great to see everything all in one place. I have two questions. I was curious about like the numbers of kids and people participating in all the different lit. I don't have a good sense of how sort of, how many kids are taking up these opportunities. So I don't know if you have an answer to that off the top of your head. I was just curious. It's okay if you don't. I was just kind of thinking about that. So go ahead and, and then I can ask my second question.
Okay, so to answer that, when we first started the first year, there was between six and at most twelve students. Then in conversations with the principals, we did a digital way to explain the opportunity to join one of the lit teams. So every student from grades three to five grabbed an information sheet and had permission to, if the families and students want to be a part of. On the heels of that, that's when the number jumped to about three hundred. So we had eighty in one school, seventy-six in another school, fifty-seven in another school and forty-nine in another elementary school. The, the middle school's always been somewhere between five and ten folks kind of thing. At the high school, there's umbrella organization called STAR, which includes the teams that stands for students taking action against racism. But, so it jumped exponentially. Then the next year, this past year, we, we didn't do that same, we tried to utilize the digital pathway where folks can find, learn some things online, learn about it, then sign up that way. I think we took a hit from that. I think we definitely took a hit from that. And as folks are learning to be more digital in our correspondence with the community. But what is, ended up happening is all of the teams now have more than, have double-digit numbers. And so between ten and twenty folks, but they're also now divided into sessions, they're three sessions that are eighteen long, which we had to do to meet our condescension and things like that. So we're, we doing that kind of thing, but still, folks are coming out. So that's how the numbers works with that.
That's great, thank you. Part of the reason I asked, and I think this is kind of a question for anyone who also worked on the strategic plans or the strategic plan, it says that one of the goals that's specifically kind of DI-related is students and staff understand how to create a culture of lit and actively work to ensure all individuals have a sense of belonging. And I feel like anytime you're talking about culture change or people having a sense, it's, it's kind of hard to measure. But I was just curious if you have thoughts or if anyone who was working on the strategic plan had thoughts about how are we really kind of like looking at all the things that are happening and saying like, yes, we're seeing some of the starts of change. And one of the ways I think is look at involvement. So there's that, which you just shared about. But I was curious about other thoughts that you or anyone else has on kind of how we think about that.
As being part of strategic planning and then a parent who's did the digital form. So part of the layer that sort of teachers are. Um, so part of, I, the layer that sort of teachers are owning this in their own buildings to me is that next step that it's not like a top-down initiative. It's like part, it's more of a, you know, it's kind of the way it's run and being rolled out by teachers who, you know, are in the buildings with kids every day and they're kind of building those relationships and it's not just kind of like a, you know, central office kind of or like, you know, administrator-driven sort of stuff. I love that it's being, you know, um kind of spreading love that way. Um, and I feel like through our strategic planning, you know, sort of that is, that kind of hits on a lot of those points with just training others to be a part of initiatives and not just ruling them out from. That was just my take on like, on the entire presentation, like parts that really feels like second phase and, and kind of moving forward with it is that just having, you know, immediate access for kids in, in the buildings at all times. Like you're one person who's dividing themselves up and how do you do that effectively is.
Well, it's funny, Maria, that you asked that question because as I was watching your great presentation, Jevia, thank you. Um, the, the sort of nerd in me was thinking that we should be asking Julie Ward to be looking for grants to do a program evaluation. Um, because I do think, I think it would serve multiple purposes. One is you're already being tapped as sort of the go-to program in the state. And a program, program evaluation will help you present those best practices just by doing what's called a process evaluation, which is did, were you able to do what you intended to do, right? And then you could add on and, and do this in partnership, whether it's with Bridgewater or some other university or some other organization, do it in partnership with the folks who have the expertise. Then you could do the outcomes evaluation, which is to say, you know, the lit bedtime story, we're seeing this and then have them collect data for that, for the Freedom uh group. This is what's happening. And I think at some point, because it's part of our strategic plan, we should be looking for grant opportunities. Because I just think that elevates the work you're doing anyway, um in all the, you know, in all the really positive ways. And then it highlights it for the district to make better decisions about how to invest money in, in the program that you're doing. But that would be my recommendation at some point.
All I would say is us, I always say is we. It's not just we, you do it together. Absolutely.
I think, I just think it's important to be kind of capturing growth as it's happening and so that we can someday, you know, kind of look back and say, oh yes, we're really glad we did this. We know it works because we want to recreate this and do more, you know, and we know that we're getting those positive returns that sometimes you kind of feel like we're getting, but we're not really sure how to pinpoint it. And like I said, this is a tough one. We're not just looking at like our math scores going up. You know, this is a little harder to measure, but I feel like it's really important to have an eye on that.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. Um, to that effect, like we were on the heels of again, bear in mind, we've had MECO for fifty-four years. We just had our first Black Christian movement there.
Yeah.
At the high school. That says something. It's good, but at the same time, it's something worth noting that, you know, that happened prior to that. I mean, so this is an example of things moving. Um, and students saying, hey, we want to do this, we want to make that happen. And it is an example of that. The, this is our house. The, the issue we have with this is our house now is that we don't have enough time for the amount of students that want to participate in it. This is good, this is bad.
Yep.
But out of that, we have art that showed up. Um, we mentioned that art is a part of this, our house. So it's been great.
Yeah, I think it's a great question on quantifying sense of belonging and measure that. And I think we've done a lot, there are a lot of things we've done. I think now what we've been talking about is how we capture, whether it's numbers, whether it's surveys of kids, whether it's involvement in the community. So that will be something that we, we're already working on, but we'll have for you. I think it's, you're right, we want to memorialize, we want to, you know, it's working. That's the, we feel the energy and I think it's anecdotal, but I think we can articulate that as well. And I, I don't think we'll have a problem doing that, but we should focus on that. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't think it's a problem at all. I mean, this is where having expertise outside of the schools would be helpful because there's plenty of good surveys and how to measure. I mean, sense of belonging is the sort of in the literature now, so that's, yeah, there's plenty of, yeah, we, we could do it for sure.
The, the way that people will participate in that will be great as well. Because we came in, this, we had a place now where people will perceive it differently. Sometimes I have the folks come in and they just come in with these, these things and stuff and it feeds this negative.
Yeah.
Energy. And so this, um putting the work we put in up till now will help the reception of it.
I would also say from the MLK event this year, you could also feel the shift in more inclusivity for neurodiverse individuals, just um, you know, participation and acknowledgement and, you know, it was, it was definitely noticeable.
And, and to that effect, it, it's almost like a day off instead of a day off, we do it all the day.
Yeah.
So the uh, the lit one-on-one, it, that goes out to new hires?
Yes.
Is it? And you said it's available for current staff?
Yeah.
And so do they have to take it upon themselves to access that or is that something that like we sent to them?
No, this is just a couple of tweets, so I'm gonna just make sure they get it, the folks that are here, they just get it.
Okay.
But anyone newly hired will get, they'll get in a package.
And are you planning on having another lit community conversation in the future?
Was thinking about it, um, but I don't know if it's probably.
It's been a couple of years.
Um, the, I was trying to figure out, we need to have another lit open house. Like, I think that first one, folks were kind of cool with lit, was they un, understood that it was clear that folks weren't being taken out of class and things like that. But some of those, um, those wounds that were still there, it might, it's, it's probably worth trying to get at some of those things. Um, the parking lot conversations were, you know, were a lot of those conversations. I think we want those to be probably more organized and set up for um, uh conducive to have an engaging conversation. So I don't know, we, it could, the, the short answer is could be, yeah, they're trying to figure it out. But is it going to be a lit open house thing or is it going to be the circle kind of thing? I don't know that folks are going to come out to a, a, another lit open house because they, I don't know, the folks kind of, we done it. Well, we can do an update, like we're doing now.
I mean, it's like, it's ongoing, keeping the community apprised of what we're doing.
This is true. I'm not opposed to it.
I also think with the, this is just based on my elementary school kids coming home and the third graders are talking about the election and all that you can imagine, the third grader. So I wonder if there's a place for, you know, a community conversation around how to, how to talk about the election, how to talk about different, different opinions. Um, you know, how to, how to have that con, hard, difficult conversation when you disagree fundamentally. Um, so just, just an idea. I would love, I would attend that one, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Selfishly.
So, yeah, absolutely. I, you, you spot on with that. It is time, closer to get to November the morning, this conversation is going to be happening. People can disagree without ending friendships and relationships and breaking families apart. We can have varying types of opinions and still be together. We can actually do this. So you, you make a lot of uh.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Oh, okay. Approval, sorry, approval of minutes from February twelfth. Questions, feedback, comments, votes. I will take a motion on those notes, those uh minutes.
I'd like a motion to approve the minutes from the February uh twelfth, twenty twenty four school committee meeting.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Lawrence, Dr. Rab.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have one to read in from February fifteenth for two hundred and sixty-six thousand, forty-one dollars and twenty-one cents, primarily uh added district tuitions and electric utilities, pretty standard, uh warned.
All right. Um, no correspondences, any other business? Anyone? Okay, great. Uh, future agenda items.
Question. What's the relationship between school committee and PTO?
Well, PTOs are nonprofits, right? So they.
But do we have any, we have no say, we can't, okay.
Like they operate dependent technically.
I just have, well, maybe we should just talk off on about it.
Okay. Yeah, like more about how the relationships work and.
No, it's a very specific visceral response to something, but I don't, if it's not a school committee matter, then I don't think it's worth bringing up.
Like, do we have a policy like to answer?
Well, I just wonder like, so we have no, we have no purview over, we just.
No, but I.
They just run at-will, whatever.
They have their own.
They have to be, do the guidance of whatever the state requires of a PTO.
They should have their own bylaws that they're following that are legal.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I don't want to open a can of worms and get a lot of hate mail. It just, I'll just say it because look, I don't, I, I don't, I don't, people will say what they want to say. So my, my question is around sort of understanding the budgets of PTOs and the huge asks of PTOs when we just approved a, a school budget. And so I'm trying to figure out sort of like, what is the PTO rightly spending money on? And what is the school district rightly spending money on? And I just want to make sure that parents and caregivers aren't be, and grandparents and all the folks are not being asked to pay in two pots. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Sure.
Um, and I, and I love.
It should be in their bylaws.
And I want to be clear, like, I am so, a hundred percent supportive of like our PTO, like they do amazing things. They help us do field trips and lunches for teachers, all the good things. I just want to be, make sure that parents aren't feeling stretched because schools are asking for money and then PTOs are asking money. I just want to make sure that there's, does that make, I just want to make sure there's a collaboration so that, you know, when we're getting asked to pay for this versus that, that it's a collaborative, thoughtful process. I'll probably get lots of that now, now. What?
Is it like asking for money?
Yeah, I mean, I got a flyer today asking for money and I'm thinking, oh my gosh, I just, you know, I mean, I'm being very vulnerable right now. Like I, you know, I just paid for my son to go on a field trip that was pretty expensive because I didn't want to do the fundraising. So it's just trying to figure out like how to best allocate funds so that all the kids can do all the things. And I'm sure I'm not the only member of a family feeling that way. That's all, that's all.
School-sponsored trips coming out of sort of official school channels in that way versus PTO.
Right.
More supporting enrichment opportunities and that sort of thing.
Right, and just figuring out sort of like, are the school districts supporting? Because I know in Bill's budget, we talked about how it's awesome that there's money set aside for families who can't afford field trips. And then the PTO is saying they're supporting field trips. I'm just trying to make sense of the different pots of money. This is not a criticism of any PTO. I'm very supportive. It's just, are we using our limited resources in the best way we can to support our families and our kids and our teachers and our schools? That's all.
The way I understand PTOs in situat is that the PTO fundraising money, they tend to spend a segment of that towards enriching curriculum. Yeah, so if, if there is like a tie to the, it's time on learning and all of that. So while they're not connected, their programming supports curriculum and teacher. Usually they ask the teachers for input, like, you know, well, when they go to Plymouth, for example, it's like uh, the third graders are doing a unit on the pilgrims and such. So it ties directly into the curriculum. But in terms of how much they're asked to pay by families for those sorts of activities, I believe they're, that, they have their autonomy on that.
Yeah.
Really, and it's like the board and then it's members and.
Yeah, I guess I'm just also wondering, like, do we know what the average budget of PTOs is? And is it equitable across the district? Are we worried that like, because one PTO at one elementary school can rate, right? Like, these are all questions.
Yeah.
So those are, and I, obviously it's, maybe we should just stop. Maybe this is in a school committee. But I'm just, these are just questions that came up, that's all. So I wanted to see what our role, if anything. It sounds like there is no role, so.
Correct. And I do, I do hear you on different events take place at different schools.
Yeah.
And I, like, I, I, I hear you on sort of some of that equity.
It made to open a can of worms.
No, no, I think it just is.
Yeah.
Um, there's, there's like, sort of like how much equity do we want versus how much it's really, should be that unique, you know?
Yeah.
Some schools.
Yeah.
But eh, you know, I hear what you're saying. Sort of like a balance. It's, it's nice when it's balanced, but it's not always balanced.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, it made me wrong.
It's all good. And I mean, technically the high school sure kind of operates differently too.
Yeah.
I don't know. I know. And it's tough in middle school, you know, it's, there's so many layers to this area. But we can look into more of like how it ties to, you know, all I know is that there are typically, um, they should have their own um bylaws.
Yeah.
That really dictates how that operates.
Okay.
Uh, sure. Anything else? If not, take a motion to adjourn.
But um, no, I just wanted, just for clarification for me, and I think that I am aware, but um, back to the elementary uh Cushing, Hattaway new school. We have our annual town meeting on April fourth, April eighth. Um, just from my perspective, and I clarified this with Nicole, that this, the school vote is not that. There's a totally separate one. And just from my perspective, I think that, I know it's not our job to communicate it, but I think that it's important for folks to know that at that, at that town meeting, the school vote will not be happening because it's not planned to be. I just don't, I don't, I'm involved to, I guess, to the second degree. And I was kind of clear on that, but not entirely. So I think it's important for whomever is communicating that town meeting is very important on April, again, April eighth, whatever date you just said. But that's not the school vote. I just think it's important to distinguish those two dates.
Yes.
This case, we're working on a um, actually Nicole and I are meeting tomorrow, you know, our bi-weekly meeting. And we'll be talking about, you know, we always talk about new school uh process and, you know, getting the word out on public relations. So what I was gonna share with her tomorrow, I'll share with all you tonight is a um, a community-wide mailing that everyone will get to their home, that will educate them on all the upcoming uh public meetings, votes and articulate and educate on, you know, this, the eighth versus the twenty-ninth, which is our vote, separate. Because I have heard that as well, you know, and, and no matter how many public meetings we have, the same handful of people come.
Yeah.
We're kind of full circle tonight.
A number watch afterwards. The numbers do go up considerably, so that, they are, folks. And I do, you know, Monday um morning um, uh, talk on the community cable that goes out there and hits a different population. So I think they're, they're being reached as well. Um, you know, and I also think there's momentum as it gets closer to the vote, people start paying attention just in general. So I think that'll pick up and speaking to others who just went through this, this is about the time where things start picking up. And we're seeing that too. So I think in what I've learned from all the districts, a mailing was very helpful that, you know, everyone gets it, all community members, the same message and it's, you know, not partisan, I'm supporting it, it's just educational. And, you know, these are the dates where, you know, we're having public meetings, this is the day we're going to vote. You know, we'd like you to participate. So we'll, we'll definitely do that in, in many venues. And then we're also working on some um, some videos. We're gonna have an eight-minute-long video that explains the whole kind of presentation that we, we do in person. We're gonna put it on video. And we're gonna have two minutes, four two-minute segments of those videos with the why behind. Why, why do we need a new school, the money piece, the redistricting piece. Um, and send those out. So that's much easier, shares a YouTube video here, share that. So those we're working on as well. So I think you'll, so pick up a little momentum. We definitely got a vote relations plan to get the word out. So I think there'll be no one that could say, uh, you know, at a town meeting that they were confused. So I, I appreciate that, but I want to share with everyone that, well, I should never say that. Always happens. But we're gonna do everything we can to, so that question doesn't come up and uh, that's our plan. So I think there'll, there'll be a lot more communication going on.
Great, thank you. Uh, Mike.
No, go ahead.
The adjourn, Mike goes to, goes to adjourn at eight, ten PM.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.